We'll call the speed to order and stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments to the agenda.
I do have one. Can we add deposit into reserve fund to the agenda?
New business?
Oh, yes, sir.
So, you can motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to add under new business, uh, be a deposit into reserve fund.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the minutes for November fifteenth.
Motion to approve the November fifteenth minutes.
Second. Additions, deletions, corrections.
I have a correction on under the public works. They sort of expressed concern about the shoulders. About the ditching that on the last.
Public works, page.
Shoulders, it was the shoulders were finished, had been completed, not, not the ditching. Oh, three or four. Right after refiguring Seagram.
And not finished instead of not done well?
The shoulder work wasn't done.
Not ditching.
Not ditching.
Not the shoulder work.
Okay.
Anything else? You guys okay with the change? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I would say because I wasn't here.
Thank you. Five minutes for public comment.
Do I need to bring this up now or are you gonna bring up the gate during your?
Yeah, I was gonna do that during roundtable, which is like nine o'clock. If you wanna talk about it now.
Okay, I would prefer. Okay, so I got a email from somebody who was at the dog park and I don't know who has seen what's happened at the dog park. But this is the corner post that holds up the green gate to the right of the dog park entrance. And what's happened is the cement has lifted up out of the ground. The gate is now instead of at this angle is almost to the ground pulling this. And what it's done is it's taken this fence, separated it, pulled the, um, there's the corner post with it, the cement out of the ground. Pass those around. This is the space that's now developed in the entryway so you can't hook the gates. I ju- I planned to close the dog park when there was gonna be a big snow coming. Um, but you, I've got a chain that's just barely, I mean, the spaces, this is wide. And so, and there you see it. Um, so what's gonna happen if the gate isn't removed? Is it's gonna continue pulling on that, it's already distorted, the top of the fence?
That's the gate that?
The main gate, the main gate to the, if, there's an entry area and it's the main outside gate.
So, the gate that blocks the way into the runway, that gate?
It's the main.
It's the one you paint green when it's road, it's the dirt.
No, right, on the right-hand side that came up beside the garden.
Okay.
Okay, so now it's let go, it's heading back towards the pavilion building. And in doing that, it pulled the gate post out, so that has totally. Um, so something has to be done or it's gonna rip out that whole stretch of fence. And other than pulling the gate off to relieve the pressure, I don't know what you could do this time of year, but something has to be done because we don't want to have to rebuild the fence when it shouldn't have to be. And we, it was discussed, um.
Well, September ninth of twenty twenty-one, um, remember we had a long discussion about what to do with the gate? And, um, at the end of that discussion, um, it was different board, um, but at the end of that discussion, y'all had decided that the, the post that was on the left, um, you know, there was an issue about it blocking the sign. I know you would remember, um, and probably Rock would remember. But then on the, the other side, the, the right-hand side of that gate was actually attached to a post that was, it was existing before the dog park was built. And, um, so the discussion at the end was that there would be a new post put in for the right-hand side and the whole gate would be moved ten feet south away from the dog park. And that wasn't done, don't know why, um, but because that wasn't done now, we, we have a serious problem.
Are they, are those two, the fences connected or is it just?
They're tied in.
Yep. Why?
I was laid off the original fence that went across there to the north of it.
I was gonna go up there today night, I apologize, I didn't get to it. What was the soccer game on? That was more important at the time.
To help me understand, so the process when this has happened, when you saw that, did you call Joe?
I sent an email to Aaron and Joe and said something is gonna have to be done soon or it's gonna take the whole fence down. I went out last night and I looked and nothing had been done. There's still room for that gate to move even more towards the ground, which is gonna pull even more of the fence over. So, it's something, I mean, it's a new fence and after this happened is discouraging.
Can't you up, take the arm off that line section?
Yep.
Why don't you just run up to him and take it off?
Does anybody know why that fell over?
Yes.
It got hit.
Yeah.
It got hit with a piece of equipment.
The assumption that that gate pulled that fence is not true. Uh, that, that fence was hit last week or the week before, it was reported. Uh, we have a claim in to the insurance company to get the repair done. And I have a quote coming whenever Prakti Coke does decide to get back with me.
Why didn't you tell us about that when we emailed you? You could have told her.
I didn't know about it until, I didn't know about the quote until today.
Well, that, that.
Although I will not respond, so I'm not gonna respond to snarky messages.
Her message, she simply said that they, that the, she told, the, the email was not snarky. She told you that the, that the fence appeared to be falling down and you replied, okay.
Yes.
You didn't say, actually Linda, it was hit, we're really sorry, but you know, it's being taken care of. This is the first we're hearing of this, that's.
Well, let's, let's assume that we're gonna get something done.
An exception to this on this other. The fence, the dog park fence cornered on that gate fence, gate post, okay? But the sign was crowded way in on the opposite side. There's no room to get big equipment through there. Whoever went through there was struggling to get through there, really struggling. Because the airport, the part of the runways all cut up, dug up, tore up. Whoever was in there turning around.
If you'd let me know, we, we have a camera up there.
Yeah.
And it would have caught something, but, and the town knows we've had the camera up there. I could have pulled the.
Tracks are right there in the grass. I was up there yesterday.
Yeah, but you don't know who did it, right?
No, you're not.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, you probably would have seen it from the camera.
Room there with that sign, the post crowded way over, it's crowded half that roadway up. It's just not the place for that sign. And yeah, it's great for cars and small pickles, but you get equipment while it's there, it's not gonna happen. Who would run equipment? I don't know. I don't know what it is.
Didn't you have a concern? Because isn't there a right way that the Sheldons have to bring their equipment?
Open up the gate on Murphy Road or where it is.
The longer, the longer we talk forever, it was, it would have been.
Open, open the gate.
But the, that gate post, sorry, the gate post on the left-hand side was further over into the runway than the sign is before. The, 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 the passage there was narrower before that post was moved.
That sign is right.
Is exactly where the post was before, where, where the post for the left-hand side of the gate was actually further in. It was narrow.
Sign is right in the roadway.
The sign.
Our big sign?
The, the.
The wooden sign.
Sign, as you drive in the dog park, is right here on the right, that sign on the left.
The space is wider than it is now. It's wider than it was before the, the, the post on the, on the left was moved.
But, but it sounds like, and I don't mean to cut it short, we're saying, understand the problem. We contacted the insurance company, we're in the process of, of getting, getting it fixed. If, if, and I think that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, just something so it's not creating more problems.
Is there anything being done to get it fixed? From what I hear, I think it is.
Until then, you'll take that big arm off, so it'll renew the pressure on it, that's all for a minute. Until they go there, fix the fence. And there, yeah, maybe the insurance will suggest a solution as well. But that sounds like a, at least a decent start.
But we really don't understand why originally the instruction of the select board to DPW and Joe to get the gate moved ten feet south away from the dog park, why that wasn't done in the first place. Like, you know, that was a decision at the end of a long discussion. I know it's a different board now, but that was what you told them to do last September and then it didn't happen before winter. And then I know like after the water line went in and there was a lot of repair work to be done after all of that. I know they spent a lot of time on it, but they, it just seems like it would have been simpler to do that in the first place, you know? Like now we've got a big mess, so.
But the main thing is we appreciate the fact that, well, I was just left with having no clue that the town had even, you know.
Knew that it was, there was something wrong.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware.
Right. And I will pull the, the camera and see if there's anything on it that would help identify who hit it.
That would be helpful.
Might be, yeah.
We are a committee and, you know, we kind of expect that maybe you'll come to us if there's a problem at the dog park and you know that the gate's been hit, that why weren't we notified? I, I don't understand that. I mean, maybe the dog park committee isn't a valuable committee, but we do try to make the property for the town as nice as it could be. So, we kinda like to be in on things that are going on with the dog park. And that's all. But we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And wait, if we don't see you again?
Anyone else for five minutes? Okay. Department head to report.
He was late. I'm sure that he. I was in the building. I wasn't. You go for. Six arrests, retail thefts, wanted people seem to be the same, like I said, last time I was here, same people. Wanted every other day. Um, we did one possession of meth up to the Maplefield store, which meth's a new thing coming into the area that's kind of worries me. That's our first, um, meth arrest.
Was it local?
Yeah. Was actually an employee. So that's something that we're gonna monitor on. What we heard is the meth is being a little cheaper and people aren't overdosing like they are on the heroin. But the meth brings all kinds of other problems, um, so I'm not sure where that's gonna go. We're gonna monitor. I did talk to Washington County, they're, they're familiar with this person. I went to their, um, crime and health sharing, um, via Zoom. And they said that our rest made sense to their information they had over there. So, the two counties are monitoring that. Um, we wrote a hundred and fifty-three traffic tickets in the last two weeks. We had sixty warnings, five car crashes. We had forty-two sets of prints in the last two weeks. Um, there's a list of our activity if you wanted to review that. We did do the food drive last weekend. Um, we collected sixteen hundred and thirty-two pounds of, uh, food and pet food and other supplies. And we had eight, over eight hundred dollars in cash. Now, the food was down a little bit. We hadn't done it in two years. We were down about four or five hundred pounds, but we were up and we had three hundred dollars last time. So we were up. More, more people were giving us five dollars, ten dollars. Um, they thought it was easier than to know what to shop for. So we, I think we did really well, turned that over to the Fairbend Concern. They have a new director, I don't know if anybody's been over and met him. He's very proactive, he's got a lot of great ideas. Um, he lives on Eagle Lake Drive. I can't think of his name off the moment, but he's, uh, talking about maybe a farm, farm to, farm to Fairbend Concern. This is some new ideas that he had. Um, he was very appreciative of this. I didn't think he, because he hadn't been here before, realized how much we had. He was, um, appreciative when we brought him in there. I had a list of all these people that donated their time. They didn't charge the town anything to be there. There's a list in there. I had help from the Paula Constable, I had, um, a couple of people from the community that helped both days. And my staff, again, they were, they were great. Um, myself and Mark Hotel did two full base, um, which was amazing. Um, the drug takeback, I was in a hurry because I was going to see my father in Flora. When I did the last reports, I forgot to put that in there, we collected fifty-five pounds of narcotics. And that got turned over to the sheriffs, which went to the feds to be destroyed. And then on the twenty-third, we get a road check amended, um, and then returned to our patrol zone. And that was part of the governor's safety. Like I said, thanks for me leaving to do a road check, then come back to our patrol zone. And I would tell you guys after we did the road check, just so you guys weren't aware of where the object was, not that people have a tendency to talk. So, um, that's what I have. Um, and then if you look at the bottom, that was our ticket revenue for October, it was the thirty-seven ninety-five, which is, which is up. And that's the way we've been, we've been doing different plea bargaining, which I think I explained at other meetings, um, in court, the judge is signing off on it, and everybody seems to be happy, so. That's what I have. Um, I know Jay, that you asked about a car. I did identify a car. They will not have it ready, I think, until the third or fourth week of December. They weren't sure yet. It's a twenty-twenty. It's a Explorer, it's got twenty thousand miles on it. It's a hybrid, that's the only difference. I talked to Joe about it. Um, they're saying that a hybrid will, can save up to thirty-five hundred dollars a year in fuel. I, I don't know. Um, they've only been around a couple of years for use. Um, the car is twenty-three thousand, I think that's what he said. He was thought to be right around the twenty-three range, but he hasn't confirmed. It's black, it has silver markings on it, or he says police who may not have to mark it. Um, but it's not done yet. So as soon as it's done, I will come back and, um, report back on.
Yeah, you've got, it's all set up so you can just get, I mean, when it comes available, you can get it because of what we did at that one week.
Yes. But I think, I'm hoping he wasn't definite on the price, but that would, the twenty-three would come under what you guys authorized.
Yeah, I think we, I think it was twenty-five in the October.
And it's not, yeah, it's not a plug-in hybrid. It's, um, what it does up to the first twenty-six miles an hour, it's electric. What happens is when you idle, it goes a hundred percent to the battery and then the car recharges the battery when you use it, which, which saves on when you're running radar or you're sitting, that's what it's called, or something that'll hopefully, you know. The only thing I'm worried about is battery replacement down the road, so. And that's what I've been trying to do a lot of research on before we committed to it. Um, but the car seems pretty nice. And again, it is the newest looking, like the new state police have. Looks like it's a twenty-twenty. It's a beautiful car, so I will know more. Hopefully I talked to him the other day by text, so.
Do you have to be concerned that when you're sitting there not idling, you know, it shuts off and goes to battery? I mean, in the wintertime, you got heat and then all your equipment. Do you have to limit how long you can?
No, it'll, when the battery starts to drain, it'll automatically go back over to start the car. It's not like the, you know, the new ones where you stop it up traffic, like my truck does it and then it shuts off and then it goes. This is just, it's made to do that.
Yeah, okay.
And a lot of departments are going that route.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that's the first forte into electric.
Do you know the making model of the chief?
It's a Ford, a twenty-twenty Ford Explorer. But again, nothing definite. I did talk to him, um, and he was supposed to let me know when it was ready. He had three of them, I had the lowest miles on it. Um, the other ones were, one was white and one had fifty-something thousand, so I targeted the one with the twenty thousand. I think that's all I have.
Are you involved with any of the, uh, the chicken? Chicken roundup yet?
No.
Did, did anybody call you about the train station down, down here? Anywhere, Trestle is, the train going?
I've been in it two or three times and I've not found anybody in there, but I keep finding the doors open.
Yeah, they, they, I had a person call and I told him to call you, but I don't know if he did or not.
Yep.
Well, she just wouldn't call. She thought there was people in there.
I've been there two or three times and I haven't seen anything change. Obviously, you can see the remnants of somebody's been in there at one point, but I don't know if it was from last year or this year. Um, usually we call the, the train company, they go forward to back up or try to, I don't think they care. They really don't, that's my personal opinion. Um, but yes, no, I've, I've been there two or three times. And I made all the staff aware because I, I thought it was our locals. Um, it's not, they're staying in the area, but not there.
Question for the chief. Have we undergone any specific training on approaching folks under the influence of meth? There's kind of what they.
Well, I don't, I mean, I think we all have a, we've had basics, but, but we haven't experienced that. So I think that'll be the next coming. So we don't have any targeted thing for meth. We're obviously been trained on pain compliance doesn't work. Um, those type of things that, what to look for, like they take their clothes off, they act bizarre, they. So we have, but we haven't gone into the actual nuts and bolts of it because it hasn't been prevalent. And I see that probably, if this takes hold here, I could see our training changing.
Anecdotally, it seems like you're growing trends in, in the field of treatment. And so, uh, I just, one of my thoughts is are we prepared as a town for something like this? Because struggling to psychosis can be pretty scary. So I'm just, just curious about our, our training and, um, our familiarity with it, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna, we're going to need more than we have now. That's my, my personal opinion.
Sooner the better, it sounds like.
I got one thing I'd like to just mention. Seems like since the darkness is coming earlier now this time of year, we have a ton of pedestrian just walking around in dark, dark clothes on. And I, man, I pretty much had a woman run into me tonight walking, dark clothes, down by the, down at the foot of the hill. She was coming, she was walking right towards me, right in the middle of the road with dark, dark clothes on.
I don't know how you, there's no law, so I don't know how you, as far as doing education or putting something out.
Kind of throwing that out there just for maybe some more people.
I'll see if I can find something and we'll try to push, push it out on social media that, you know, the time change. I'll see if I can find something. Let me write it down so I remember.
It was kind of scary because I had on come driving, I'd kind of lay right over in the other lane.
You gotta watch them at the, at the information book down here because they're always scooting across the road there.
Yeah, but this was, this was right down, just, just on the bridge by the fitness center. It's weird.
Well, they're moving, yeah, they, they run up, down the hill and they're running stuff.
Maybe just stop and talk to those guys and just tell them. I don't, I don't even think they're aware of it, you know what I mean? They probably think we can see them, but sometimes you can't.
I think we're all guilty of that. Sometimes, I mean, I get out of a car like this and I'm not realizing that I'm on the highway and not. And you have to be cognizant of trying to put your, your other stuff on so you're reflective or at least put your, you know, we have those things on the coats that come off, but I think we get complacent. I'm, I'm guilty at times.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. So we had our first test run storm there the week before last. Um, pretty successful on our end. Uh, we had a couple repairs necessary. Um, two hydraulic leaks from stuff that hasn't been, had pressure pushed through it too, too much. So, uh, most of that's been repaired. We had a couple parts come in today for one of the trucks to do more repairs on that one. We got them back in service and then, uh, the trucks are all back to operating, uh, full, fully operational. Uh, part of that storm, we were able to get that sidewalk machine out on the side box the next morning early with the V plow on it and, uh, it operated fairly well. Um, there are a few spots where it doesn't matter how small the machine is, it has to dodge telephone poles. So it has to come off the sidewalk a little bit, so. Uh, those are the only places that we see significant, not significant damage, but the most of the damage was where the machine actually has to go around that object in the sidewalk. Uh, the rest of the time, leaf litter and of course where the grass is growing up over the side of the sidewalk higher than it come. It's just gonna unfortunately be remounting or tearing into that stuff just a little bit. And we'll just need to get it rigged back when, uh, the summer comes.
There's a couple spots on West Street early, really in that.
Yeah, down the, uh, top of the south end with the, uh, the slate sidewalk itself.
Yeah, that's like a road.
Yeah, that's all that laid slate sidewalk net. We've never had good success in the non-frozen weather, get those opened up. Um, those might be something we dodge a little bit, tell us a little harder or do a weekend, some other way to make it work there. Um, uh, salt has been slow to come in, which is frightening because we were given that warning from the LCT with the rail strike possibly coming that, uh, if they do even strike a day or two, it's gonna cost us issues for months. Um, and even at this point, I called, I called, I think, three or four times after that storm just to get another load in that shed because we hadn't gotten full from, we had put up the sand. They still hadn't brought the rest of the salt to get that shed full. So we're back to almost just about full after, I think we got the last load Friday, or, you know, Monday. So, um, there was a question that was raised about the pedestrian markers. Those markers are, are not gonna be out all winter. They've just been out because, uh, we won't pull them probably till the weather becomes more eventful where, where we would have to dodge them every single day when we're out plowed. Then we'll definitely get them out of the way. But, uh, the way the storm was, came in, I'm still surprised there's still snow in some spots where it is. I was expecting it to be done in a couple of days. Um, with that, the cemetery is closed. Numbers are gonna leave it that way at this point down in Cedar Grove. Um, we've been in and out, we'll be in and out, doing a little bit of, uh, work on the mowers to get them put away for the winter. And so if somebody says they see us in there, it's, we're gonna pick the mowers out and service it and put them back for the winter. Uh, wastewater, the garage finally got all its electrical parts in, so the electricians were in last week. Got the electrical components installed into the rest of the, the circuit breakers and stuff and got that all fed from its new power source. That is pretty much at ninety-five, probably the ninety-eight percent complete on the garage portion itself. Um, there's still some valves that need to be replaced and sluice gates that they have to replace in the effluent of the chlorine contact chamber. And of course, this time of the year, they're, they're coming out Friday to do another one. And we've, we've already talked to the engineer and with them and said, look, if you wanna wait till spring at this point, wait till spring. But they wanna come do one more, um, valve inside of that chamber yet Friday. So we'll see if they show up and actually do it. But, so they're, they're preparing down there to pump down that half of the chamber so the contractor can get in there and do that work. Um, so everything down there is working very well. The staff today was out testing equipment with the rain, um, that was coming. It'd been a day, or a little while since they even checked on the new generator, newer generator at this point at Adam Street and found that the battery there ended up has popped us out a hole in this, in itself and leaked this acid out and we had to put a new battery in to keep that running. So, um, the staff doing a good job keeping checking their stuff, making sure it is operational when it will be necessary. Um, up the water plant, actually tomorrow wastewater and water plant have, I think it's second and third graders coming from the Benson Village School down to do tours of the plants to see how they operate. And, uh, both operators, Carrie and Mike are very excited to have youngsters down there interested to see the work they do do. Uh, up the water plant, uh, late, um, in the week, or early this week, previous weekend, there's a bypass pipe inside the plant that if we need to, we could bypass the plant itself. It was having an issue, it could come directly into town, which it's, it's a messy, messy day. But that internal piping has sprung a leak. I spoke with an engineer today and we're drafting up what it's gonna look like for a repair to that. And we gotta talk to the state to see if we're actually gonna pull that bypass completely out of service or if we leave it in there with new piping. Uh, I've been talking with the engineer, we have a, somewhat of a repair planned so we can at least stop that leak from happening before it becomes bigger. Um, it's on a, one of the twelve-inch lines that's in, in the building and we don't need a twelve-inch line to open up inside that building anytime soon. So, we like to control the flow. So we like to control the flow going in and out of everywhere we can. So, um, that's in the works. The tanks, the chemical feed tanks arrived last Wednesday. Some of the guys, all the guys from the highway department, myself were up there Monday helping them move them in. They're down in their home. And then of course, all of the accessory piping we need to actually put in place is all on backward. So they're here, but like Mike said, they're pretty wonderful with all these holes in them. We can't get any fittings that threw into them from the manufacturer. The most important one is the flex coupling that comes out of the tank. That's actually gonna be fastened ground, has to have some flex to it. Otherwise, if the company walks in, sees we hard pipe it directly, which we can get those fittings all day right now, it voids the warranty of the tank right off the bat. So we're gonna unfortunately have to wait. Mike is gonna have to order a little bit more chemical in the smaller tote, which does drive the cost up a little bit. But unfortunately, that's where we are with everything these days is sitting and waiting till parts can arrive. So I think that's all I have for you for the moment.
Questions? Let's talk about power. Let Joe do this.
Do mine first.
Okay. Keep firing that. It's okay, I don't care.
That's fine. We can let Joe go over the power routes too.
Yep.
Oh, we'll start, so I'm gonna start with a question to put to the board. It's time to, we're starting to think about our town report as a way to offset costs. I talked to BLCT last year about this and they said we can sell ads in our town report. We're interested in selling ads to offset the cost of printing of that report.
I think it's a good idea. Who's selling them?
I just make calls and see if some of our businesses want to buy some.
Is your, is that on Facebook or Facebook page or something? An advertising?
Anything, anybody helps on marketing with our.
It's only completely.
This is, uh, when you're, when you're talking.
Well, if it doesn't buy it.
Are you talking in our town report, ads from local businesses? Or are you talking, uh, ads from?
I would say anybody that does business in town. You got, say like Princeton, I'm just gonna sell.
Exactly.
He's a big, big deal around here. And there's a couple other carriage companies that are around. He might want to do, you know? And then we got some good businesses in town that might support it, you know?
Coca-Cola and Pepsi.
Pepsi.
I'm serious. I'd rather have it come from them than I would local guys. They get.
They get taxed as much.
They get taxed a lot. I mean, every time somebody, somebody needs a gift certificate or donation, they all get hit. But, but if they wanna put an ad in, that's fine.
I'll, I'll reach out to Coke and Pepsi.
You never know.
You never know. I mean. Thousand dollars a page case.
Yeah. That leaves.
Okay, I will.
Consensus is.
Consensus is, we're gonna sell ads and we're, we're new at it. We'll learn as we go how best to do it.
The town report will be that fit. Ads will be that fit.
Well, it's pretty much, you know, like any.
Like the phone book.
The phone book, you know, or, you know, something in a football game, something. There may very well be a lot of businesses in the rawland area that would like to put an ad in. You know?
In, in my mind, it'd be great to, you know, our locals to have one page where we do something for our local, Fairhaven Inn, Derfies.
If they want to.
One, one, one page, one page with a small, here's, here's what we have to offer. We, part of their being here is that maybe we don't charge them for that. Isn't that the other?
If you can offset that, that would be great.
But I'm not.
The next thing is we're gonna put advertisements on your uniforms. You guys are gonna look like. You're gonna look like soccer players.
Um, moving on, I, so I, I got a call from A and E, Altrigen Elliott. They asked about the waterline project that, that we're gonna do downtown Fairhaven here. That is scheduled for a bond vote. It's at one and a half million and bond vote is in March. So just to keep the board apprised of what's going on there.
What's the bond vote for what now?
It's to do a major waterline repair underneath Main Street before we pave it. This line is on, is part of a plan that was developed years ago. They are looking for grants for that as well, so it's not just gonna be a matter of.
There should, there should be a ton of money out there. And it, I would.
The project will be done in four years.
Well, it, there's, there's all kinds of infrastructure money, particularly water and sewer money. And it's being chewed up by the larger municipalities because they can hire somebody to just, just hunt for that kind of stuff. And, um, we should be getting some of that. Maybe A and E has some.
They'll find someone for it.
They're, they're hitting on that pulse as much as.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I would think they would.
But your heads up is that in March, not only will folks be voting on our budget, they'll be voting on a bond to do this work.
The waterline under the, the main street. And this all came about because of the state's paving. We don't want to go in and tear up that road in five years or two years after we just, after the state just put down black house.
We've got three years.
For the project.
They won't pave before three years.
It's scheduled for twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so three years.
So you're, the bond vote will be for the entire amount? And if there's a grant, then that'll reduce that?
We have to bond for the entire amount. If we use it all, fine. If we don't use it all, also fine.
I don't understand what all the surveying is, the paving job.
That's part of that paving order.
They surveyed it five years, six years ago when they paved down here before. So they don't keep records?
I think they have to redo it every so many years.
I mean, the lines don't move. Well, the road's in the same place it's been for a hundred and fifty years, so.
Uh, to give the board, so I try to give the board a, an update every quarter on the, on the budget. We're in the month five now. So we should be spent at about forty-two percent of the budget. O and O is at forty-four percent. O three O is at fifty-two percent. And don't panic at that. We just spent a hundred and.
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand on paving. So that breaks up that percentage expense. It'll even out as we go. Water department's at thirty-five percent and sewer is also at forty-four percent. So we're all, uh, right there. So thank goodness. As inflation went up, I was afraid we'd be further along in expense than we are expended, expended than we've worked. But so far, so good. Uh, speaking about bond votes, in front of you is something that looks like that. And on the backside, there's some information on the back. This is Chelsea's town garage that they had built in, I think, twenty fourteen. I was asked to pull some numbers to see what, what it would cost to have a town build a town garage like Chelsea's. All the pertinent information is on the back, but all in all, you're looking at three million, almost three point one million dollars to build a new town garage.
It's all my money.
Something to think about. I know there's been concern about that building. There is grant funds to offset that, though not, not three point eight, or three point one million dollars. Uh, moving on to things that we've been up to. So I've, I've reached out to that surveyor two or three times now to do that cemetery. He's just stopped calling me back at this point. I've reached out to other surveyors to get them on board to survey the cemetery. Still waiting to hear back. Santa came to visit us on Saturday. I, I hear it went pretty well. Trailer park, I'm working through the trailer park cat sale. I, I've actually finally finished, um, going over all the proper, over all the deeds, over all the paperwork. So I'm, I'll start notifying, I'll start notifying interested parties. We should be able to get that up and for sale late December, early January. So that's, that started to move along pretty quickly. Lights in the park and the parking ride, still waiting for the state to approve that contract, contract language. But we did get some preliminary numbers back from D and K. Those numbers are more than what our grant is for, which we expected that to be because of inflation. At this point, it's not a matter of are, are we, you know, if we're going to pay a little extra, the question is how much? So we'll see what that looks like when the bids come in. Town hall renovation, uh, they told me they would be able to get that elevator moving by mid-December. I think they're a little optimistic, but we'll go with it. Police department talked about their food drive and DPW talked about the sidewalk club. That's what I got for you. Questions? Oh, I do, I'm sorry, Chad, I have an update for you. Um, the board asked about usage at the transfer station Saturday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday and Tuesday. As you would probably expect, Saturdays are a big day with an average of about nine hundred dollars a day. Tuesdays and Thursdays are similar, five forty-five on Tuesdays, five, five hundred and seven dollars on Thursdays, the average usage. So it's not much different between the weekend days.
Does that include punches?
No.
That's just checks.
Checks.
Checks. So that's not the full?
Absolutely not.
No, but it's.
It's not the full picture.
It's, gives us a general idea of use. Like almost double on Saturdays as opposed to Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Punch card revenue would probably track it.
Yeah. It's not like most people are gonna want to check on Tuesdays. Some people pay the check of my punch card, correct?
Right, right. And punch cards should also be included in that too, but punch card, oh, punches would not be. But there's no reason to think that they would track any of that.
Can you, can you track punches? You don't, okay.
Good.
How good, how good you really.
Just a clicker.
Yeah. Just write it down.
It, it would be. It would be probably eighty-five percent of the time you wouldn't have a problem with it. The other fifteen percent of the time it would be, it would be crazy. Just depends on, on your, your volume because it's not equalized at all. And when it gets crazy down there, it gets crazy.
Does your software track the tonnage, the, the pounds?
No.
And you're, you can't get a week's.
Still waiting on the scale company to come down and fix the, um.
Yeah.
Scale to the computer, to interface itself.
Okay.
Same as here guys. Funk off, funk off, no answer, no answer. I do have this, another company that I got a number for that I just haven't reached out to them. You have to see if they'll take us on and help us out with it, so.
We currently have two software packages, one that's quite a bit better than the other, I think, as far as function. But until we get a, an interface that works.
And that's all I had.
Don't still confuse us with why you couldn't, why you can't track that. That doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, the old fashioned way you could track everybody that's in there, right? I mean, mark one, two punches, whatever. I mean, I mean, you could write it, handwrite it and get it. But an idea, it wouldn't have to be forever. Maybe a couple of weeks. Just so we have some idea of what we're trying to.
What, what problems are we, I, I, excuse me, what problem are we trying to solve?
The problem we're trying to solve basically is, is that twenty-nine percent of our total labor, DPW, is, is directed at the, at the, um, transfer station. It seems high and maybe it isn't, but it, I, part of it is, we're revisiting this from the last time. Part of it is, is, no, no, it's, it's, you should know, it's, um, we're, we're taking, we don't have, we don't have the roster about. So when we have to replace somebody on their regular hours, we're taking somebody that's probably higher paid in, they're getting overtime. So that's part of the twenty-nine percent, but there, um, we just don't know.
Again, the, right off the top, to, for the three days that they're operational, is twenty-one percent of the hours of the workforce.
Well, that's reassuring, so.
So right off, yeah, right off the bat, over the week, twenty-one percent of the work hours that are scheduled for all DPW are automatically down there. Just to have them open for those hours.
Okay.
So that, and that, so the other factor, the, if it's higher or lower this year, last year, the guys were down there. All of DPW was down there for probably almost two weeks doing all that, moving around with piles and stuff for the solar projects and all the other repairs. And again, this, this current fiscal year, so the guys were down there two, three full days with refrigeration. And the cylinder and the hot batch are running down. So guys were down there helping do that and then out and all back together, so.
So I mean, that's, that's, the discussion already has come up, but one, one solution, that's great. I mean, that's fantastic. And, you know, you're twenty-one percent, that's a lot less scarier when you know why. I mean, it's a start in the right direction.
Add a number, expand.
No, it's fine. It's still.
So if you hear what, you dropped it eight percent already.
Joe has up on the screen is a layout, or breakdown layout of the power routes that are traditionally run. So if a storm is the same as the last one, which they never are. This is the route we try and use as to start the, uh, the day, the night, how this storm feels. So the red, red lines are indicating the main, the main run. We call that the main run. That is the main corridors through town, a four A, twenty-two A as they come through town, West Street, and then around the park and such like that. That and Fourth Street, now Capitol Hill. That's the main run. That's the run that sees first priority in every storm condition because that's our main thoroughfare through town. The green route is another main run, or the secondary run line. That's the outskirts of town. That's, um, I'll go to the other map, it'll show better of that. This includes River Street, Scotch Hill, Bolger, Green, Swamp. And then of course up Bigelow, Edmond Pond and Sheldon Road, Airport Road as well for that truck. Those are the two big trucks, the center, the big trucks with the winds on them. Then the blue and orange routes, or those are gonna be the side streets. Those are the little trucks, those are, you know, the second to last of what we get done. Those are all the main, the little side streets off North Side, South Side. We have broke down North Side, South Side, keep the truck on that side of town. Usually the South Side truck is fairly quick to getting their stuff down. We'd have to turn around onto the dirt roads as quickly as we can, all the little durs that, that encounters. That truck's equipped with, I mean, a spreader to put down the sand on those dirt roads. There is a list that accompanies that with the, the color list and cloud list of truck, or road list that accompanies that. This during a normal storm, so the main run is the one that starts it off and make sure that's taken care of. All the trucks would pretty much leave the barn at the same time. Usually that red truck will probably beat everyone else. That's usually needs running that as the forming. So he's usually in, making sure, seeing when stuff really needs to be going. So he'll be out getting that road open. As the storm progresses, as we go through one or two revolutions, rounds on these roads, there'll be some changing of routes depending on what truck has what material on it. And, or somebody's got caught up in an issue with the truck or something happened that they're a little delayed to get back on their second run. A full run on a decent day for most of those, for the average is gonna almost turn three hours before a truck will make a full revolution on all of their streets. Some will be faster than that, of course, and some might be a little bit longer depending on how the storm is and how the equipment's operating that day. None of those routes really address your areas of free parking, the downtown, cleaning up transfer stations, stuff like that. A lot of that stuff happens if we're, if we have another extra guy. The transfer station's closed for the day, we have that extra guy to come out and help with that. If I'm available, usually I'm made available to help out making sure those downtown areas or bitter areas are cleaned up with a loader or whatever piece of equipment might be available at that time.
But the red, the red lines, three hours, how many, how many rotations is that, is that one?
So that one's the shorter, tend to be the shorter one, the reason, so it looks, if you look at the map, it looks the shorter one. That truck has to run up and down those streets twice to make the full width on. I think actually Washington Street's almost three passes up one side and three down the other because it's so wide for that truck to get all the way across that. Whereas the, the green lines, those are a pass up and a pass down with that truck to get that whole road open.
The red lines are the ones with the trucks with the wings on?
Yep.
And you're telling me you have to take three passes of wide street with a wing?
To almost get the full coverage, it is that long. The wing on that truck's nine foot.
I don't, I don't agree with you in that, but that's nothing to do with me, but I don't do that. That makes a lot, that makes a wide path when you've got a wing and a snowplow.
Yep.
That road isn't that big out there, it's not, you're covering, you're covering almost twenty feet when you get the wing down.
A little bit short of that.
Yeah, okay, so that road out there, that's not eighty feet wide.
The passes don't cover from where the plow starts, the plow stops. Vehicles push slush back into the lane and all that other stuff.
Like what bothers me is when you see both big trucks following each other, that's what bothers me.
Yep, well, that's, that will happen many times because the trucks, when they're coming across to do, go to their route, travel on same roads. If you catch them one in front of the other, it's just the way the time worked out that day.
On South Side, I don't see why you're pulling them on South Side.
They only have one bridge to cross to get to the South Side, so it's hard to put another one down there.
So it's the blue and the, the blue and the yellow, or yellow, orange, wherever that is, that's one ton?
Those are the one, one ton, ton and a half trucks, yep.
And they're ten foot plows, correct?
They all are now, yes.
And most of the time I always saw it, I mean, two passes on each one of the streets.
Yep.
Pretty much to get them back.
Three in a county.
So how was it this life, this one storm, I was out of town for a, I?
We had three operators around three trucks, we were fairly good. It, every time we had the roads nice and clean, it started coming down. And I was like, come on, they said it was a stop somewhere around this time, then another band would come through. And they said there was gonna be banding in it and they're like, please don't band over me. It went fine. The one truck that's ever had a pretty significant hydraulic leak at the, towards the end. We're still, we're putting most of it back together, but operationally, but we've got some other stuff going on to fix on that. But otherwise, the only complaints that I heard were sidewalks. Unfortunately, they're, as part of our policy, they're the last to be touched.
And we didn't get there soon enough?
That's, yep, so, you know, we went home after, I think we were still for twelve hours that day. Next morning got out early, the machine was on the road by four o'clock the next morning. And by daylight, they, pretty much were all plowed, so.
Sidewalks are plowed before the school the next morning, I think.
Yeah, that, that evening.
That's because we came in at four in the morning.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, no, that, that evening, there was quite a few people on Facebook that were quite upset then.
I mean, you have them for the school, that's, to me, that's the priority.
You can't be everywhere else.
We, we understand that, there's some people that don't understand that.
Because I was up through before school started and everything worked, it was all plowed.
Yeah.
They go around purpose and everything was feeling good to me. I mean, you guys are a good guy.
Thank you, yeah, it was a, it was a very good test, Mike.
Good.
Any questions for me? I've been on the board since, off and on, since ninety-one, I've never seen that, ever. Thank you. This is Andy.
I'm also kind of impressed, and you're a big deal. So it's fine to know.
You had a map similar before, right? For a couple of years? I don't know if it was the same exact routes, but.
They're different, but they're just like.
Yeah, the, the maps have been out there for, for a couple of years, but.
It's, it's nice to see, I mean, if nothing else, if somebody called me.
This is here, I'm kind of impressed with it because it's something about how you did and what you've got going on.
Yep, yeah, they are that thing, so I appreciate that.
Yes. Any other questions or are we just?
The one time to go along with that, well, one, at one point we did have, it was kind of basic, but we did have a winter road policy. And maybe it's, I mean, you revisit that, attach that to it or whatever, but it was something that we worked up, but, yeah.
Sidewalk, sidewalk.
If somebody asks, you can hand it to them.
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes perfect sense that you do the roads way before, well, way before sidewalk, you know, that's.
They're, depending on how manpower goes and equipment goes, there may be times you do see that sidewalk machine out in the middle of the storm, that might be to try and, it's a bitter storm. I'm sure we don't bury the sidewalks so deep we can't actually do anything with them afterwards, but it, it's one of those that, the policies allows us to, that is the last if we, if it has to be. We're gonna try everything we can to fit it in as we can, but it's just not, it's not always practical.
Yeah, well, let's see what you do when you get a little lake effect snow, eight years, ninety years of snow.
I'm still gonna go out there a weekend, that they're having that issue, I don't see how they do it out there.
Still sit in the barn and go. Lord, put it here, the Lord will take it away. Anything else? Anything else you wanna comment? I appreciate that a lot. Thank you. I will stay in the, close to the phone. All right, we have some old business with traffic ordinance.
So I had to eat, mistake I made, guys, on the traffic ordinance. In the, page fifteen of the ordinance, I messed up the times. I had, instead of seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM, I had seven thirty AM to eight thirty PM. And the times just didn't, they were, they, they were just wrong. So I had to fix that. Also on this, I added, on A, I added westbound under section four, westbound. And under B, I added eastbound, just to clarify, this means going either direction on Fourth Street. And I also added under section five, and Glenn found two or three of these, the language to say no parking, where no, no parking where no parking signs are posted, instead of just no parking all the way down, up and down the road. So that was, that was all the changes made, corrections made.
All of page fifteen?
All of page fifteen.
Well, it doesn't matter to you, the parking, no parking sign or not, in the wear time.
The, the problem, right, the, the problem was with the ordinance being in fact, that without putting something to the effect of, saying no parking signs, we were putting an ordinance in that we were gonna violate right after we put it in because it says you can't stop, park, leave standing, any vehicle on Fourth Street. People, whether it's, whether it's lawn sales or, or visiting someone, there, there are people who, who park for a period of time, they don't park overnight or anything, but all I did was go back to where the language that we used for the grade at school and added the, where official no parking signs are posted. So just in case, that issue we talked about where if we had someone parked close to mechanic street, the school bus driver having trouble coming out with them. But if we had to, we could put no parking within so many feet of that and it wouldn't be a hazard, that's all. Long as we're looking at the ordinance, it's, let's.
I would just think of winter.
Only do it once. Are you looking for a motion?
I need a motion and some signatures.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to traffic ordinance to include article seventeen that creates a school zone on Fourth Street with the village we just.
There's a second. Second, thank you. Chad, board rich, Chad rich, take your bet.
It's a fourth, not a second.
All those, okay, everybody know what we're doing here? We're adopting a revised argument. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, winter maintenance.
So the, the board adopted a new class four highway policy last year. This year, in fact, in February. This policy requires somebody who wishes to maintain a class four road, to do winter maintenance on a class four road to get a permit from the board. Mr. Gilman, whose mother used to live on the end of highway, town, uh, town highway sixty-three, wishes to plow that road during the winter. And I have a permit for the chair to sign if the board approves it.
Make a motion, won't plow. Second, yeah. Everything, she passed, well, she did. Everybody understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I assume you just. Put the product.
We do.
Today is your twenty-ninth, right?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-ninth, so. Almost Christmas. There's some time, but. Patience, patience is my good man. You know where the legal road is down here?
Yeah.
It's more across the.
Across the street.
It goes up the hill. Okay.
I don't want to make the radio shut.
Deposit info you were going to.
Oh, yes. So the, we had some scrap we took back. The first is for the wastewater plant, and it was in the amount of a hundred dollars. And we're asking the board to deposit that hundred dollars in the wastewater, wastewater capital reserve fund.
So, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the DPW had taken back some scrap a couple of weeks ago in the amount of five hundred and sixty dollars. And we're requesting that money to be deposited into the highway equipment reserve fund.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
I had to ask a question. Why, why couldn't this be an automatic thing? Why, you know, I mean.
The board a few years ago decided that the, the manager does not have access to those funds. So I'm, I'm not allowed to use them. I assume that also means I'm not allowed to just dump money into them. So it's, plus it's, just to keep it, everything on the up and up, like where did the money come from?
It's a good idea to have everybody aware of it, but, you know, just, it should, should basically, it's a no-brainer to put the money back or something. You know, my opinion.
Well, you see, I had the same trouble with the my, the police station, or the police department, which is going in the general fund. I think they should go back into the police fund, but. So it's just my opinion. I mean, they've raised quite a bit of money this year, and, you know, between what they're doing with fingerprinting and, and everything else you've been doing, as long as, I just wanna make sure it shows up on the revenue side for the police department and goes toward your budget, that's what I wanna make sure.
Yes.
Because they, they're doing the money, they're making the money, nobody else.
All right, um, let's see, we're going select board, here's our first. That won't take long.
I did, I did have one question.
Sure, I did.
Uh, under the select board one, where we had legal services that we put eight thousand dollars in there. We actually spent in twenty-twenty-two, close to twenty thousand. I believe when the actuals come out for twenty-three, we're probably gonna be up around twenty thousand again. I don't believe our eight thousand number in legal fees is a, if you're trying to get a good idea of what we're spending, I don't think it's a good number.
You're probably right.
But how much is legal fees that are paid through the insurance?
Um, almost all of our legal fees are paid through insurance. So that, we were on track to be, we would have been about a thousand dollars over that year. Towards the end of the fiscal year, we had about ten thousand dollars that went to investigations that were not budgeted for. Investigations to town manager cost ten thousand dollars. That's where that money went.
So are you comfortable with the eight? I, I just look at everything that we've had going on this year and are, and are gonna continue to have going on and.
Whatever are you talking about? But that's where our insurance is coming in.
And, and my, my question though is, are we good with that number?
So we're, we are gonna sell the trailer park that, that will come to fruition a year from December, January, which will lead us into a new fiscal year. We can expect some legal trouble with that. One hundred percent, the people, the people in the park will start to sue, our very litigious resident will sue. It'll be, it'll be in that.
And to answer your question, I'm, I'm, again, not, if you're telling me that our insurers will pay everything but eight thousand, if it's a somehow, that's okay, I'm fine with it. I just don't wanna sit in here having a lot larger bill and not have anybody, no one to get hurt. That's all I ask.
I, when I did this budget, I added that ten thousand, but I cut it out because we were trying to, you know, break it down.
That's right.
I, I, I guess I don't know, I guess is my answer. Uh, can we use more legal? Yes, the way people are today, they're, everybody's more litigious. Just having to get people to remove their junk off of their properties has become, we get mired down because they just flat up refuse and the only way to do it is to walk it through the court system. So could we use more? Yeah, I think we could. We would spend.
What about some people that are being fined for not doing, like the people down there that have big fines against, because of the junk? Why couldn't that go into a fund for legals?
So stuff like that, it does come into the general fund and does offset that. You won't see it a one-for-one offset, but you, it does come in and help with those overages.
But it's, it shows it as a carry forward, not necessarily directed at, at the legal fees.
Exactly.
So you just take it from the carry forward, how do you do that?
Well, it just, it just comes in revenue. So at the end of the year, it'll show you spent, just as an example, two million dollars and you brought in one point nine million.
Unexpected revenue.
Yeah, it's, it's just offset.
It's unexpected, but I mean, how are the auditors comfortable with that kind of an offset? Or they, without, without precise.
an offset? Are they, without, without precise, um, tracking of it? I don't know if that's the right word, but.
Uh, it, it happens every year, every, almost every year. Uh, last year we had a, a high amount of unexpected revenue and it just, it just dumps into, you know, the pot of money and offsets what we, what we spent. So it's.
That's why it's so important to ask the question, when you have a big carry forward, you ask the question, why? And if it's unexpected revenue, what's a lot of what?
Well, that, I learned that lesson from the notorious million dollar budget. It wasn't over taxation. It was.
Well, some.
A lot, well, some of it was, but I mean, it was as much, um, more revenue than, than expected and which was a surprise.
I brought us down this rabbit hole. I'm just saying that it sounded like you were dinking ten thousand, tried to help us out and cut it back. We have a lot going on. If we just bring that eight back to ten, I've accomplished some. I, I, there's.
Yeah, I, I think we need to budget for the trend and not our hopes.
Our budget's supposed to be our best, our best, where we're going to be and I.
You're the budget hawk. I'm, you know, I, I'm.
I usually don't spend. I want to cut.
I know.
But, but I'm going.
You, I just don't, I just want to point out that you put two thousand here and then there was three thousand a couple of weeks before that. So you're, you're the one, when this budget goes up, I want you to take.
You're going to look at me and say, maybe it's because.
It's got to go up. I'm not arguing that. I, I, I.
So we're going to ask you to really move it up.
That's all I'm saying.
What, what, how does the budget react to, like, uh, if you have in your, uh, example, Joe, there's going to be issues with selling the, the trailer park. But we're going to try to track all of our costs to do that and try to get all of our, at least all of our costs covered on the sale.
Yes, right.
I mean, how does that track to what the issue is right now? I mean, you, you said that was a, a big issue that you saw coming up. Do you, do you budget more for that and, and then get money back and have the unexpected revenue?
So for something like that, we would dump, we would charge, just using that example, um, we would charge the, the fees, I'll just call it the trailer park line.
Yeah.
You really wouldn't even see it, I guess, in that case, you really wouldn't see it hit your budget because it would be sitting over here and that line would be reimbursed once the trailer park is sold. So.
Right. So your example, if you're, that one specific example is, has gotten other members concerned that, that we, we budget for reality, not our wishes, but that example is telling you that you don't really have to concern yourself with that as much.
You have to have the money, though. I mean, you may get it back sometime, but I would think you, you've got legal fees that you're probably going to pay upfront.
That's what the auditors are for.
I, but it's. What I'm hearing, I'm, what I'm hearing is we're, we're recruiting some money, but that money that we recruit doesn't really show up in the cost of, of the money we put forward.
Well, specific to the, the legal fees.
Yes, exactly. It's kind of confusing to a lot of people, including myself.
Yep.
And if we had, I'd feel better if you showed me that this nineteen thousand was an anomaly than I thought we spent over our legal amount the year before and we were over our legal amount the year before that.
I think you have one, you have one case that's really, if you look at prior to having the litigation, what did we spend? Because we're at the end of that one. I know we have the one other trailer park, if that comes to be looming, but what do we on average spend if you take out the one you've been dealing with since twenty fifteen and seventeen?
And, and I thought that was some, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I thought that was nine to ten thousand. Gee, I went back when we did, when we showed the actuals in a different way, time before, when the accountant gave it to us in different format. I thought we were putting eight in and it was going nine, nine to five.
Actuals spent.
Actuals spent. Was, was, was higher.
It, it, it is always a little over, yes.
I hadn't seen one go under the legal fees.
When we had two thousand.
That's why I'm saying, putting ten is not.
If we have to come back and look at it and take a thousand over, so.
Yeah.
So we're up to ten on that. Anything else in selectment? Economic development is there. It's, you took a.
I took a five thousand dollar hit.
There you go.
I put two thousand dollars back in. My economic development committee took a five thousand dollar hit, uh, on this budget. So, yeah.
Now, you're back to being a budget hawk. Okay. So unless there's something else, town manager.
So town manager's just the, uh, actually that number needs to change. It says two and a half. It should be two and a quarter. So that'll, that'll go down by point oh five percent. And I did pull up dues and meetings. That was for an ICMA membership, but I don't get a lot of use out of it. So I figured there's no sense in spending it.
So that fourteen hundred is not going to be spent. It's going to go out.
You're just leaving a hundred in?
Yeah, I'm just leaving a hundred there just for, uh, other events in, in the state.
Any other questions? Town manager? Treasurer?
Uh, treasurer reflects the increases that the board decided on la, this year. We, we bumped it up to sixty-five hundred.
Police department. Anything you want to say chief before we go through it or?
I don't think so. You just want to go look at, um, down through.
That top item, the only one that jumped out at me was that top item that went up by ten percent and that's the newly negotiated.
That's not settled. So that's just.
Yeah, it's not settled, but it, those numbers are there. Are they in there?
That'd be estimated.
That's estimated.
If it was, I believe, yes.
Okay. And that, and that was for all of our memory. That was fixing, there was some, there was a couple of pay inequities and a couple of positions, if I remember correctly, that we.
One.
Similar to water and sewer that we, that we addressed that, just one of that number. That's where it is. The less, the rest of it, chief, I see a lot of zeros coming down to there. So.
Yeah, the.
It's pretty hard.
The part-time I did have up a little more because we did bring them up to more than McDonald's. Um, but the, the line item didn't increase. Um, so we, we've stayed fifteen thousand through the last few years, but we did up their pay a little bit to make them competitive with some fast food local. Um, that's reasonable. So that line didn't go up at all. That one, again, I would like to give up a little bit. The boss brought it back down. That's a discussion for you guys to do if you want.
Say that, say that again. I'm sure.
That's a discussion for you, the board. Um, I'll live, again, what I've always said in my career, I'll live what you guys give me and we'll try to work within that. Um, I think it needs to be a little higher. Just my own personal opinion, but.
What's the part-time?
Yes. Just to make up for the, um, the wage increase. Um, the administrative assistant position, I don't think that one, I think if you look, there's a screw up. I don't think that only went up a dollar. I don't think that was the two percent or.
No, that's a typo. I'm going to have to fix that.
Okay.
Cause that should have went up, squared up two and a half.
Two, two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter.
I think everything else, I mean, there's line items that have been there, the same dollar amount most of my career. The copier went up.
Change them now.
Because the, uh, the lease went up on the copier. Communications, again, that's the whole elephant in the room. We do not have.
That's the dispatch one.
We have nothing to report back that we did two weeks ago. Um, unless, Aaron, there's been no more meetings, right? So I, I don't know what to tell you on that one. I mean, it could be, we could get whacked with a big bill or no bill, or it could be twenty twenty-five. We're really waiting for that report, which maybe we'll have it by January first and can talk it again before we finalize the, um, report. I don't think it'll be this budget cycle. I mean, Aaron, Aaron's on the committee, so I think it'll be one or two.
I'm getting my haircut tomorrow. I'll make mention of that.
All right. And I think if we get on the whole, the whole budget, really the only increase is the salary line items. The, other than that, I think everything is pretty much the same
The only other thing that looked like, if you're, if we're looking at, at your whole budget, uh, or are we?
We can go right down and just, my, my, my thoughts are we'll just drop down through. If anybody has any questions, speak up because there is no need to waste time on it, but there is no need to gloss over anything.
Vehicles and equipment with the gasoline estimate that we have there and the cost of gas and just, I, I just highlighted to say is that it's an eight point seven percent increase, but is, are you comfortable with that? How comfortable are you with that number?
It's so volatile. You don't, I mean, we've, I, I remember it going up one time where it was, you know, four something and not recent, but in the past and to fill a tank here at sixty, sixty-five dollars and then it came back down. It's so volatile market right now. I don't see it's ever going back to two dollars or where it was. This is my personal opinion, but.
But we said that at four dollars the last time.
Yeah, you were on the board that day and. So I'm going historically, we've been okay. But again, that's that whole caveat is we could be at seven dollars a gallon next year. It's hard to predict where we're going to be at.
What are you going to say, Joe?
I say we leave a thousand in there. I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah.
You know, and we're going to see this all through this whole budget, even in DPW. I mean, you're going to see the difference in few places and near the months. Nothing we can do about it.
What scares me is leave us up to saying, we, we all know, everybody in this room knows, there's going to be more.
Right. I, I, I agree. I wasn't looking to take the thousand dollars today. I was looking at, thinking, I didn't know if it was high enough and that would, getting us close to what we think. And it's saying that, and I know it's the best guess, but it's somewhat, we're going to be making some decisions about, is there some money that we have to not spend over here so we can cover the cost of fuel and other, other things. That's all, that's the only reason I'm trying to get a clear picture of what that number really looks like.
What does, off the top of your head, what does a thousand dollars worth of fuel right now, where does that get you? What's your budget per week?
That's to, I don't know, weekly? I know I, I probably refill every five to six days in my car.
About two hundred and fifty gallons.
Yeah.
That's figuring four dollars a gallon. So it's not.
In theory, it's not a lot of money or not, it's not huge, I should call it.
Well, let's leave it there and.
And you could, you could spend that in a month and a half.
Well, I, I try to do too, if gas goes, I try to, A, I'm pretty strict on the no-legal policy. Like, we don't need a car unless it's an ice storm and you need, or, you know, shut the cars off. You know, I know, I know other departments, they leave them run. They start them in the morning, they run all day. Well, I don't think that's good for the car, A, and B, it's not necessary. Unless it's freezing rain and you need to come into the station, then I leave, I'll leave my car running so you don't come out with a layer of ice on it to go somewhere. But I'm pretty big on that. And the other thing is I put a mile restriction. Um, sometimes that's difficult if you have to take one to run on, you know, the lodge in your court, but I try to cut back the miles. When the gas prices go high, like, I still want you out doing patrol, but be mindful of your, of the mile restriction. And I know that doesn't sound feasible to do patrol on a mile restriction, but I try to have people focus more on your heavy traffic areas. Um, sometimes the outside, you know, outside of town pays that price a little bit, but if your numbers suggest this area is heavy, or try to focus on that area to keep your miles down on the car, if that makes sense.
Then hybrid's looking pretty nice.
I think, again, go back, I think it's a worthy try. I mean, it's not forty thousand and see what it does.
Going down, I'm, uh, you know, equipment and vehicles, vehicles and equipment, excuse me. Anything else? Don't forever hold your peace until sometime in January.
Is it that though, now the increase for equipment, police vehicles?
That's the gas.
Does that, yeah, that's, uh, okay. That's represented, yes. But there's no real maintenance increase there on anything? Are we, are we happy with that?
There were vehicles.
Every time you retire an old one.
I'm hoping that was a down. The only thing, if you looked at one, the twelve thousand we were over, some of that was outfitting the car. That's, you know, when they charge you ninety-nine dollars an hour and they spend twelve hours on the car, fourteen hours, and that's not equipment, buying equipment that fits in that car. That's where you see, so the years you don't buy a car, a lot of times that number will stay all day. Um, the one car, we were fortunate, the sergeant did a lot of the work on it. He had COVID, so he worked on one car instead of, so he worked on it at home, wired it all up. But the other one, it got shipped out. So unfortunately, the only raise ninety-nine dollars an hour now, you can put a radio in your car.
Takes a lot of time. Just more than that. Just, these cars, they're the one you're looking at now. Are they all wired?
It depends on what the other department had in them. Like, the last one came with a console, so we didn't have to buy a four hundred and fifty dollar console. We used the radio within it. So I don't, it's hit or miss on what you get with it. Some even come with lights depending on.
Okay.
However, they got from the other department.
Right.
So I won't know until I actually see the car. So like I said, historically, maintenance costs have stayed pretty, but I mean, with the inflation and everything costing more, I do see that going up a little bit, but I'm hoping to stay.
Animal control. Unless anybody's got anything else, we can always come back. Questions, comments?
Which one are you at?
Animal control, PG, figure.
The big jump is the radio clinic. I think we had a large, large number last year. So I think that's where they're projected if we have that number again. Um, and then the salary line, um, put it up a little bit because the guy we have now is active and he get, he's getting a lot of, he made the mistake that he can help the guy get his cat out of the tree. So now he's getting called more. I'm using that as an example, but the, unfortunately, when you have somebody that's more responsive to the public, we start getting more complaints and more calls.
Okay. We're good for the first pass. Emergency management is next, and that's on four. Any comments, Jim?
Just the, uh, increase in fuel is reflective of fuel prices and a hundred dollar increase in the annual service contract.
For the.
For the generator. That one is town owned. Um, get that put in with a grant several years back. Has an urgent designated emergency shelter. It was the only one that had power. Now the high school does because they put one on, on their own. So two shelters that are, that are equipped with backup power.
Moving on. Party department. Part two, six. You take the, where'd you manage your hat off and put your.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Coming on.
I'd say it's pretty, we pretty much held the line where we could cut, where we could replace it, but I thought we could get away with it. I don't know if you got any questions or any explanations on, but that's, I see a lot of negative numbers.
No, well, it looked pretty good to me. The only, the only one I highlighted to talk about was the dispatching services one, and it was the same discussion.
Except with ours, we know what we're paying, because we have a five-year deal with Washington County.
Oh, okay, so that?
That is going up.
Different, different.
Yeah, I think it's going up now like a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars a year, because for the longest time it was a hundred dollars a year, and so we're gonna sell what we're like, we have no problem with that, because they've been doing what they do since the nineteen sixties, and they have it down, and they do an extremely professional job at a very reasonable cost. And, I'm sorry, but we're not interested in giving it up. I don't think Jake Kerber is either.
They were, uh?
And he sits on the committee.
They give us a free app, I am responding, so a lot of guys carry payers out of the radios, but like right now, if a alarm goes off, I can respond through my phone. We walk in the station, there's a TV screen there to see at night, I can look at it as a fire officer, wonder who's coming, who's not coming. So if Aaron's crew from Polley's coming, I can look at what they're bringing too. So, gives me a very quick thing, and that costs zero to us at the moment.
They had a three-year grant to cover the cost of that, and we haven't heard anything about any charges coming in that name, so it's, again, very, very low worth, because it's, you know, cutting edge technology, and it's, but everybody uses it.
Yep.
The state won't even document runtimes now.
No.
Our department rolls out, state dispatch is like, yeah, copy it, they don't care if an expert's coming, they don't, the rescue squad needs times for their sheets. They're like, keep a track of yourself, they're not doing any of that, it's gotten awful.
And all I have to do is go online and give them a range of dates, and all my calls pop up, and all my times.
So, so the budget looks pretty good to me. My only question for you would be, I think a year ago, we talked some about that we needed some, we had some new members, and you were getting some new breakout gear, or, first up, is there anything on the horizon you want to give us that we should be?
Couple things. First of all, we're, every time the, the AFG grant comes around again, we're still applying for, have a backup rate. We've gone twice with no lock, we'll try it again in January. One thing I think I'll do this time around is to cut the air compressor out of it, because the packs themselves are higher priority, and I think that might be pulling our application down a little bit. So, we get the pack grant, and funding the upgraded compressor that we'll need for the upgraded packs, we'll cross that bridge at a later date.
What's your compressor cost for those?
Oh, I think they're running, what, fifteen?
So complete, and compressor's gonna be a fifteen to twenty thousand dollars?
Fifteen to twenty. Because the problem is the new packs are forty-five hundred PSI, whereas the old ones are twenty-two, so our forty-five hundred compressor's gotta upgrade it to a six thousand to fill our tanks. We have, at the moment, we have three junior members, well, actually, two former junior members that have transitioned to probationary, one that will shortly come along in February, and hopefully, we will push them, this is the time you get your firefighter one in. So hopefully, the next fiscal year, we'll be looking at getting some, getting their firefighter one in, so they can, if they're interested in interior firefighting, become a certified interior firefighter. We currently have eight members, of which probably five or six are active, that are certified as interior members. So, your interior, NFPA wants to have your gear no more than ten years old. Financially, that's a real big crunch, but we really try to, we stress that with our interior people especially, correct? They're support people, if we can do it, great, if we can't, we're not as concerned as we are with our interior people. We want to make sure when you've got, you get that certification, that you've got a set of compliant gear to go with it. So, that's something that would be on the horizon. And the third thing, the big elephant, is we need to look at replacing apparatus, because I've got a twenty-six-year-old engine, the last time it was inspected, they're starting to do a CSDA information in the frame, and Castleton's got same manufacturer, about the same vintage, and that rig has been deadlined. So, that's something that we need to move on. The timeframe's getting shorter by the day on that. And unfortunately, the last year, the apparatus industry has gone crazy. As far as increasing cost, where we were looking at probably a five hundred thousand dollar piece, you're now looking closer to six, if not more. But, the good thing with this one, as compared to the last purchase, the last purchase was a pretty specialized unit, whereas this one is pretty standard, so there's not a lot of, not a lot of customization. The big thing is to get the tank size, you know, on a chassis that will fit in the building. So that's something that we need to get moving on. And the other thing we've got is, it's a similar problem, and not, not quite as expensive, but we have a brush truck, which is a perfectly surfaceable brush truck, and we're running low on drivers, because people cannot drive skater transmissions.
You have a CDLs?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you get kids, and they come out, and they want to drive trucks, and they're like, well, don't have a P or an R or a D, I don't know what to do. And, you know, do we?
It's real.
Do we take it as a trainer, and put a couple clutches through it, or, you know, at one point, but at some point, we need to look at rechassising, and at least rechassising that one.
It's funny, it throws out, and somebody with CDL, here, drive this truck. I can't, well, you have a CDL, well, I have an automatic restriction.
It just, my brain blocks for a minute, and we've had to rethink or think, because what Jim had brought up on the truck idea, well, we'll just play it around, you know, just numbers to think about, you know, four hundred thousand, at four percent, at fifteen years, it's thirty-five, five a year. You know, you do the same thing at twenty, it's twenty-nine thousand, I mean, we haven't really been knocking it out of the park, putting a lot of money ahead, but we have to start the process, because I've reached out to some vendors and stuff I'm friends with, you know, we're talking about one to maybe, at the most, two-year process, to build the truck how we want it, back and do touch and feel, we did a very good job.
Delivery dates are probably.
Then probably one to two-year to get it back in, so you're talking three, four years. So we could be two to three years out, and again, it's just a reality, and, like last time, this is one, Jay was on the committee to help us buy the loan that's, we're talking about with police, remember that, Jay?
Yep.
You and Jack. Just, we're gonna start the process, we just want you guys to know, and you, well, welcome to be part of that process, but let's start the kind of initial, we just want the line side, Jay, it's gotta happen, it's a reality. You know, nobody likes it, we all pay taxes here, but it's.
But you're looking at a chassis like what's here now.
Yes.
You're looking at a pretty truck.
A custom might be actually an easier or cheaper replacement, believe it or not, based on, the commercial chassis have come within close to that, but definitely, you're welcome to be on that committee, we'll have that conversation with the reps. It's within the same money, and sometimes cheaper, depending on what it is, how many of these commercial chassis with the conversions.
What the problem they have now, with the regulations now, is that when they get a commercial chassis dropped in, it costs them about as much money to modify that for fire apparatus use, as it does to build one from the ground up with that, with that purpose. So, it's, it used to be a lot bigger difference at price point than it is now.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're ordering a truck through a manufacturer, you're gonna give them the specs that you've gotta have, they're gonna build that truck to your specs. They're not gonna just give you a truck out to lock.
Correct.
No, no.
So, I mean, you're.
But if you're starting with a commercial chassis, they have to mod, say, with the modifications they have to do to meet NFPA spec, sometimes you're in the, financially, in a better position to just build it from scratch.
Point I'm trying to make, if you order it for a fire truck, they're gonna build it for a fire truck.
At a higher cost, but I understand what you're saying, they're not ripping stuff out, but what you're, I see what you're saying.
They're gonna build it, but they have to have it for.
Let, let us do the homework and bring you facts.
Bring, bring us facts.
You know, it's a little bit, well, when we talk with other J's and stuff, but let's, you know, so you have accurate information. Like you say, commercial may be just as easy, we're, we're not against it, just whatever makes the most sense for the town and everybody, and it's just, kinda know the, that ugly price tag's coming.
How much, how much do we put away each year for fire trucks? Do we have a way to pass?
But, it's, you know, something like that.
It was seventy-five hundred.
It used to be.
It was thirty, you knocked it to twenty one time, not saying you, the group, because that was when we had the others, town manager made a mistake on his budget. I think you're down to seventy-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred bucks. What's your, what's going to wear?
We're putting a hundred thousand dollars in there, way for fire trucks.
Whoa. That's a bigger town.
Got a bigger fleet, too.
Fire, the fire trucks gotta be the same, gotta be like we don't.
No, no, I'm seeing, they gotta have, we gotta have, they gotta have the same equal operators.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll start on that process and get back to you, but that is, like I say, it's a slow process, it's not gonna.
Oh, God.
Wake up tomorrow, say, hey, look at the truck.
Not gonna be in this budget cycle.
No, it just, this will be a next year conversation to come back, and doesn't say we can't get together, you guys, or we're interested, this is what we're finding, what do you think?
This budget cycle, if we get a rough spec put out, talk to some vendors, get some information back, and then tighten things up, that's probably where we're gonna be at at this point. As I say, the last piece was about five years, from the time conceptual draw, concept to final delivery.
So you've got time for some things to look.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, being proactive, should we up that a little bit?
We probably should.
That's the whole point, right?
You know, I mean, just get a little bit of that.
Say, for, for years, it was running twenty-five, then we headed up to one point to thirty-five thousand for the year, and then it slid back down, and then the problem was, we took the turnout gear out of our operating budget, started funding that through the reserve fund. So seventy-five hundred dollars will get you two sets of gear, and you're done. So, you're just, you know, it's like the tank in the mud, that all the holes, you're sliding yourself further behind. It takes a shot to get going ahead, but once you get it going, then it's easier to maintain.
Well, no matter what we're doing, that kind of money, we're going to throw in the voters.
Absolutely, absolutely.
On grants and whatever else.
Whatever we can plug in.
I mean, that was, that was the thing with the last purchases, is, we put together, I think it was Serena, was Serena put together a, a funding package on that deal, because that was, that was nine years ago, the truck's almost ten years old.
You haven't been able to watch in that fund right now? I can't find that stuff.
You got two hundred grand is the job?
I thought there was like two hundred, two.
Yeah, I think like two tens, something like that.
But, the numbers you were talking about, you know, the six hundred thousand.
It's astronomical, I know.
Right, right, but if you got enough for a decent down payment with it, and then you can put a package together for the rest, because she did, she did a USDA, got a partial grant, and the rest was a real low interest loan.
Yeah, well, let us, let us know. I mean, I, I know it's not anywhere near what we need, but it's, at least we got, we got some idea.
Yep.
Any other questions for the fire department? Forget the fire warden, I think we didn't do, is there anything there? That's two hundred dollars.
No.
First pass, thank you.
No, no.
No problem.
That's all we got for tonight, folks.
Budget.
Finally back for consul one, I think next one, unless you wanna bump over that now and get it out of your way, I can come back, it's either way.
Uh, I don't know what.
It's late enough, it's your call, I just was here, Billy suggested, this is off, but if you wanna do it, that's why we wait till next one, quarter to nine.
Quarter to nine.
If you wanna keep moving, you got other stuff?
It's not gonna take that long.
No, whatever.
It's up to you, I mean, whatever.
No need, you come back.
It's on page, uh, five, I believe, under forty-one, nine.
Yeah.
Some of it, so going across, really not a lot of changes. I will admit, you got me pretty cheap last year, when the changes were happening with Jenny, I forgot to give you a bill, because things were going on, so you got me cheap last year, so if you notice, like, some stuff not spent, that's why, so, thank you, you're welcome. Uh, like you say, we don't go for big money, it's just there to help the community. The only thing on the communications, we had that change, be aware. The only question I have on that, it kinda goes back to that dispatch issue again, we have a new radio coming from my truck, as mine is not transmitting right now, so if I come out to back up Bill or anything like that, I don't have other, my portable, I can hear, I can't talk to them. The, it's the age of the radio, the, the piece that would basically send a signal back, it would be two to five hundred dollars to replace it, it doesn't make sense with that money in the old radio. Went to Joe, we had money from before, or whatever, that should be in, I think we've been waiting a year for the radio, haven't we, Joe? Or, darn close.
Yep.
And at some point, if Sean continues as an active second consul, he will also need a radio, I think it was, whatever, a grand or something like that, so you may wanna maybe bring that back up a little bit in case that, what that happens is, they're going to a new digital style format compared to what we have now, this is VSB at the moment. If we end up with some other dispatch, maybe it will be required, but I imagine it well, it's basically to tighten the frequency, so they're not as easily messed with and/or heard, sometimes too, but it's also the computerization of the, of the radio dispatch. You gotta be able to talk to somebody if you're out at three o'clock in the morning dealing with something, but whatever you guys decide, worst case scenario, we come back, we'll have to have something.
What if we bumped it to a thousand dollars?
I think that's fair, I think, you know, we've, usually we got enough to move around to cover anything, a couple hundred bucks.
It's an eight hundred dollar raise, and what's in there again?
I think that's fair, I go with that a hundred percent, so. Other than that, I think you're kinda in line, if we get into more, we get into more, but I think we're kinda in line, if you guys agree with everything.
Um, as far as the radios, I don't know if Don's even aware of it, like, they, they did send out a schedule, it could be any day.
Right.
So they started with barracks, and I think we were scheduled October, November, December to target Raulin', but I don't know how everything else has gone to actually pull the plug on analog to, to video.
Well, it just makes sense.
So it could be any day, like, so, so I don't, even though he could wait for that long, it might be sooner.
Right. So, we talked about this last budget cycle last year, and you were made aware of it, we kinda put some in there, and just, we've been kinda all watching, you know, avoiding the bear in the room, or the elephant in the room, but, the only other thing I saw, like machinery and equipment, I think Sean had a bunch of light stuff done to his truck, that's the only guy who hadn't really spent any money, so, I mean, I think he should be up to date, unless there's something else going on now, but usually, like, I do my own wiring and stuff, I don't charge a town for that, so. I'm happy, if you guys are happy.
You bumped it to a thousand.
I was gonna say, we bring that up to a thousand, two hundred to a thousand.
I think it's fair.
To cover.
Yep.
I, I think it gets us a good start, if we have a little problem, I think we can figure
it out between the two of us, so.
Yep.
Never been hard to work with either one of them. Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Thank you, guys.
Good.
Save us another time meeting.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Moving right along.
What's happening?
So, as Jake mentioned, when he came in last week, there's still the decoration contest for your homes here in Pear Haven. The judging is on December twenty-third, I believe, this year, and if you're interested in signing up to be part of that, you can reach out to Jake's secretary, and he can, she can sign you up.
No, I thought there was, I thought there was a timeframe already, to see who you can sign up.
To pass?
I don't know, I thought it had, but I could be wrong.
Somebody told me it was gone, but I didn't, I didn't know it wasn't, I wanted to be in it. Why would you have to sign up?
I had a flyer, there was no time on my flyer.
I think the only thing that he was concerned about was no one for each one, each place was. So, I mean, that's, I think that's why Jake, the way he was talking last time, it just gives him a kind of a map of where to go to look, that they know where people have done it.
I hope they go to outlining areas, because there's that first house on Brooklyn Heights, which is not downtown, she does such a beautiful job there.
And then, January fifteenth, the discussion about the Famous Red House is still happening over at the Legion, I believe that's two o'clock start time.
January?
January.
Okay.
That, as far as I know, is only gonna be a call.
Okay.
Any other? Any updates on parking lot?
Uh, the bridge grant is coming back open. This will be my fourth or fifth try. They're not, they're not gonna give any.
I heard that from our representative.
Yep. This is the federal bridge grant.
Well, there's, there's an office on one toward, there's something to do with the state too, because it's back on the agenda.
Well, the, the thing that he was worried about, I think, was that it wasn't.
On.
Wasn't on there because she, he said that Cindy told him it wasn't on. It is, it is in the rotation, it is there for the state. It has a certain priority level and it's on the radar. That's about all.
One of the reasons is because it's a side street, right? Not a main road. That's why it's sometimes put off.
It won't, yeah. But once he knew that, now he can explain that it's a safety issue, following anything else.
Because didn't it get onto the consideration from Rutland, including conditions transportation committee?
Yes.
As well? So we're, it was starting to show up what it needs to show up.
It's getting some visibility, but that's, I like that.
Is only, we're still waiting to hear about the grant?
No, I haven't heard anything, not that you mentioned. That should be coming up though, that's due.
As soon as we get that, I think all changes are done. And we'll submit them to this board. Nothing outrageous. I plan some of the stuff.
One thing about the ARPA spending, if we're not gonna put money in this budget to take care of the fence around the park, I'd like to see us ear, ear tag some of that money to do that. It's not a bad idea. I think it's, I really think it's gonna be nice.
A few more trees wouldn't hurt either.
I agree with you because.
Please.
If you look, if you look in there, there's some trees that are going to have to be tinned because it's hitting.
Even if you don't cut any down, we've got to put.
Yeah.
Or eventually there'll be no trees in there if we don't plant some.
Right. I think we should look at looking at like four or five trees this year.
When we're talking painting the fence, are we talking a thousand, two thousand, five thousand? I'm not supportive of five thousand dollars ARPA money to paint a fence. I'm supportive of buying the paint and then getting some volunteers and go paint a fence.
You don't understand.
Help me understand.
You gotta be careful with all them marble holes. You can't have just somebody that's just sloping paint on something.
I still believe we, we are not giving enough benefit to people and volunteers that, if we've got a fence that requires Mike Lanzo to paint it, we've, then I, I think we got the wrong fence. Not that I don't support, but I'm, I don't support ARPA funds going when we're, everyone else, for example, when my economic development committee took a five thousand dollar hit to make this budget come together, there's no way I'd spend five thousand dollars on a painting a fence.
What are you accomplishing on your, on your committee?
We're accomplishing quite a bit of bringing business and more revenue into this town.
Any new business?
If, again, I look at the park and if we can't get that fence painted by, let's have, uh, the historical society put some money in it. We, we as a town, we put, put, put some money into it. The concerts in the park that uses the park and everything else, they put some money in it. I'm not saying don't paint the fence. I'm saying sitting back and taking ARPA money where, where we have tons of things that need money and quite frankly, painting a fence doesn't get up on the top of my, my priority list. It's one of the things that we should be doing.
See, I'm sorry, because that is the heartbeat of, of our town. That is a showpiece of the town here. And I think it should be taken care of and I like to say I agree with Bob. I don't think we should be able to put any more signs around the park. I don't think anybody should be hanging stuff out the fence.
Again, it's not, I don't agree with you on this.
Well, let's, when we're, we're not at the point where we're gonna spend ARPA money yet, but that kinda money in that.
That's what it's for.
That money, it's a one time, it's not, it's not much, so.
I've heard a lot, I've heard a lot of talk about the money. I haven't seen a single person come in with an invoice saying, this is, this is the boat I have. What, what's it cost? Fifty dollars a gallon for, for paint? How many gallons of paints are gonna take to paint it?
It's labor. We're sitting right here talking about our labor because our budgets are going up because of increases in labor, which is legit. So don't you think people are painting, aren't, when they go up in their prices?
Again, I, I believe volunteers can paint.
Well, I'll tell you what, you volunteer to paint it. We'll get the paint for it.
If, if we get paint.
My wife and I, we could get some deep in there.
I, I go down, I go down and give time to paint, I'm sure. And what, and what we would have is our taxpayers, instead of looking at something that came in that they don't touch, don't get near type of thing, they'll own it because they went down and helped scrape and, and brush it and clean it and paint it. I, I'm just saying, I, I think we're selling our folks out.
Then I guess you, you come up with a committee and get volunteers to do it.
I, again.
I think, I think, I think we could get volunteers to do it, yeah. And another.
I agree the need to paint. Jake, don't get, don't get me wrong, right?
And another thing is, I agree that we don't want paint sloping all over everything. Marble, it would look terrible. But I also know that I walk around that fence and there's a half, three quarters of an inch between where the wood is gonna be and the post, so if that can't be cut in without getting paint on the posts, there's something wrong here.
Absolutely.
You know? No, I think it can happen. I mean, nothing said we couldn't make up a cardboard jig and set on that post and mess it off and go around and paint and then move that to the next post and do the same thing. There's a lot of ways to do that without sloping and may everywhere.
I'm just saying, there's gotta be money put somewhere to take care of it.
I agree. And we should, and not only should be, oh, we're talking a one time paint job here, we should, there should be money settled away, set aside every single year to maintain this park, including the fence, including some new park entries, including some tree replacements.
Absolutely.
I think I said at one other meeting, if you have some unanticipated revenues, you make a small park rep maintenance, you know, like you do with replacement, then you, even if it's a, you put two thousand dollars in, you have to paint it every five years or something, a tree replacement or something.
See, what's it been, it's been since you put the post in, that hasn't been touched since you put those posts in.
How long?
It's been.
I've heard six or seven years.
It's been longer than that.
Has it been longer than that?
Well, the other thing too is, is there are other maintenance things that are gonna happen, like new lights for men to maintain.
And if you go on, if you go along with your life, I didn't bring a river, but now it's like the walkways in the park, when they get the lights put in, I'd like to see those walkways tapered back. They're so hard for some of these people after concerts. They gotta go up that, it's, it's like a foot incline on some of them, you know? And I hope they just taper them. The walk could be easier, you know, a little topsoil. You know? But I mean, you can't do things like that until the lights are put in.
Right.
You don't know what kind of.
It looks kinda gray here and up against.
I always, that's something I think we should watch out for.
Okay.
That, that's, my daily wicked is the park. I've spent a lot of hours in the park between school functions.
Bye, but it's been different.
I never loitered. I never loitered. The cops have never come to it.
I didn't know if they were loitering with you.
However, I believe that the park is the magnet for pretty good. Um, this, this budget really should have something in it every year.
For a park.
To keep it up. I'm not saying that you should put out ten thousand dollars this year so we could get some trees and some paint. I do believe, the, the fence was painted once by volunteers, not this fence. It, the fence is at a point where it needs more than just paint, right? There's some places where just painting is fine, but it needs, it needs a deep cleaning, like you're, you're talking about cleaning house. It's a, it's a deep clean.
And they'll do and, and things, but those are all.
But you're talking.
I agree.
You talk about the importance of it. I was gonna put lights up on one day, last week, and they'd already put the carolers on. They had them up.
The what?
The carolers.
Oh, yeah.
And I was there probably an hour and a half, maybe two hours, and there were at least five people came in there with children, was taking pictures of the kids in front of them. And, you know, and just, it's just something that does drop.
In the summertime, you, you see people in the gazebo, you know, they bring a pillow and a sleeping bag, and they're reading away in the afternoon. It's a place that. Enough.
It's, it's.
We should support the park.
We're not gonna lose the park. I'm not in anybody's.
People sit on that fence. We can't allow it to rot.
I don't see the fence rotting.
Well, it did before.
No, but I'm, I'm, I've, I've walked around the fence myself too. I just, I just think that, uh, need to understand and wanna see the quote. And I'm not ready to say that everything we, every time we need something to do, we need to pay, pay taxpayer money to go do that.
I agree.
I, I think we would get more if we got, and I think our people in Pear Haven love the park as much as.
But it takes somebody like you who's very interested and get the word out there and get yourself a committee together and get people that are interested.
And then we get, yeah, and that, I think.
You've volunteered twice now at this meeting. Congratulations.
We are repeating ourselves.
Yes.
Let's move on. Um, board roundtable.
Well, Rich, working on a couple of things and we're still working on sidewalks, trying to, trying to develop a list of streets that would be prior, I just buy newer sidewalks so people can walk on without dragging their legs and the sidewalk pop and fall without tearing up the turf and going around with the telephone poles. But, uh, we're struggling with where to start really on it. And, uh, I know we were gonna talk to the school about that grant program. And, uh, if anybody's got any ideas, let's get together, get them out there. And also, you, you tell them that we go in here, this is just a, an idea, a starting point, but we have gotta, we gotta keep moving forward on that. These guys need a, need a decent place to maintain their equipment work on. They really do. That's where I'm at. Is that, uh, does that drawing of, uh, uh, town barn include area for salt shed or would that be?
No, it's not. It does not include a salt shed.
I don't know much space.
There's a lot, there's a lot of discussions gonna happen on this.
Oh, yeah.
You know? Well, we gotta get it done, so.
Is there interest in moving forward with the town barn and salt shed? I mean, it's gonna be four million dollars and three of you would have to agree at least. So is that something we should spend our time on? Or is this something we should wait till future?
It's gonna be how much now? What'd you say?
About three million for the, three million for the garage, another million for the salt shed and plus permitting.
It's a great idea, but where are you going to come in? Where's the one?
It's, I'm asking if I should try to do it. It's, it would all have to be tax dollars. So I, I could spin my wheels and develop things like this and pull up numbers and hand it off, and then be told no, okay. Or I could just not do that because there's plenty of work to do. So if we're interested, I'm happy to do it. If we're not interested, I'll wait till future years.
I don't really think we have a choice to at least know what we're up against. We really don't. I mean, you can say three million dollars, but is that realistic? Is that enough? Is that too much?
Those numbers, those three million dollars is, that has the inflation rate plus an increased square footage rate. Those numbers came from, uh, the one camp. So those numbers are pretty, pretty much in the long term, for this year, for current.
So you got fifty thousand dollar start, so.
I mean, mine.
What happened to the property we were looking at?
What happened to that?
I think everybody came to the conclusion that didn't do what we wanted to do and the building was.
Well, I'm not sure if we have done, have gotten to that conclusion.
Well, I thought we talked about that.
We did talk some here.
I.
It's an old building. It beats a lot of work.
What I, what I'm trying to get my head around, and what I, to try to give you an idea of at least of where I stand on that, I thought we went up to the airport, did the wetland thing for the salt shed to go in, planned where the new town garage was gonna be, so we had salt shed and, and town garage and that, and that, we had that big pile of milling that was gonna be moved out and placed out. I'm just, I'm sitting here going, I don't see that land, because I'm not ready to say I'm go buy more. We're trying to tax, we're trying to sell some of the, the land that we have. We have, we have a place. The only place I know of that has been identified that we have is up at the airport where the, where the salt was gonna be and the town new town garage is gonna be right next to it. I haven't changed from saying unless you've got a, a place, another piece of land that we have that you're gonna put that on, that's probably where it's going. What I don't know is what I thought we were is we said salt shed, we went up and down and all over on the costs and everything and finally said enough. Do it, get back out of that, let's come back again. I think when we go back, it should be a package of, and I'm not, I don't wanna speak for DPW, but I'd like to think it's a package that includes salt shed and, and new town building. Let's, let's package the, and do it, do it once if we have to bond it or, or whatever, but do it, do it once. So the real question, before we even get into doing a whole lot of work and putting numbers though for me, is where are we gonna put it? If you're not gonna put it up at the airport where we've, yeah, again, got, got the necessary permitting for the salt shed, I don't believe we paid for the permitting for, for, for the, the town barn, but if it's not gonna go there, I think we're putting the cart before the horse if we don't even know where we're gonna put it. So I, I think I gotta.
Sure. Well, I was, I was following the plan of that's where it was gonna go, so.
That's, that's what I've been thinking, this way it's going.
And this is something folks like myself and, and other employees struggle with, is boards change, other ideas bubble up and kinda forget what the plan was for two years prior. Um, right now, this was, this design through D and K would be placed up at the airport with the salt attached to it.
See, but, my point was is, and still is, up at the airport, everybody talks about the salt shed going up there and nothing else. We're permitted for salt shed, we're not permitted for anything else. So when I put the salt shed up there, we're running a loader back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You know, all of a sudden, we don't get a permit to put it in a building up there. We're stuck. We're dead in the water, guys. And that's gonna be heartache and discontent forever. So we, it's all gotta be done, if we're going up there, it's all gotta be done at once.
Right, and my understanding.
We're gonna have to look at some of those.
I, I, my thing is, then let's get back to yea or nay on the property on Prospect Street. Uh, whether we're gonna, if we're not gonna do that, then we're, I, I think we need a new building. I, I, I. So I, I think, I don't know that the, I don't know that, that young property does it for us, but I don't know.
So these numbers are something. Come on. You're not telling me a steel building's gonna cost you seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right, I, I, I'm, this is just a, a conversation.
Sit down, design a building that you want and go see some of these people that put up steel buildings. I mean, this is, seven hundred thousand dollars for a building is ridiculous. I'm sorry.
Well, it's not seven hundred thousand, it's three million.
Well, three million. But seven million for, seven hundred thousand for a salt shed.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
I agree.
A plain Jane steel building with no concrete underneath it.
No, but concrete.
No, but listen to me, please listen to me. Just a plain Jane steel building off the shelf, you're done again four to five hundred thousand dollars before they do the excavation and the concrete work. I, I've talked to these guys.
I talked to a couple too, I can't remember, but I'm not gonna get into it.
But from my understanding was, well. But my understanding was when we, about the salt shed and when we talked to the state, isn't the question of whether we're going to get a permit to put a DPW building up there? Is, how much money is it gonna cost us and it's gonna go in? Didn't, didn't we discuss that with them? Because this is not new for them.
Yeah, it wasn't an, it wasn't an if you wanna get a permit, it's a when you get a permit.
When you get a permit. We're good to go if we wanna go there. So if I could, what I'm saying is, if our current board is saying, hey, no, don't like the airport, don't support it. Well, if we don't have, and I think that's what you're looking for, because if, and if you don't support it, I'm saying, fine, show me the land that we own already where we're gonna build it.
If you're gonna build a garage, it's gotta be at the airport.
I, I think.
So there's two, there's two questions. Joe's original question is, do we in fact wanna pursue this? And that's the question I want answered right now. Are, are we in favor of pursuing a building?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
I have a question. What's it gonna cost us? Do you have to go through an engineer to do this?
We'll have to get some kind of building engineered. Yeah, it won't just be have an Aaron and the guys go down and slap up a building.
I understand that.
It'll have to have some engineer.
They get it designed, we have to go through these clowns we have up north?
Yes. Which clowns?
It'll have to be engineered.
If it's town money, you can use anybody you want. You don't have to do, if it's town money, you don't have to go through the hoops that the, that the state grants me to do.
I, you gotta do it, but I just.
Like the engineer.
Fifty thousand dollars for an engineer. I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, I mean, that's weird. That's the first one. That's the first one. The second one is, in my mind, is we have to, we have to decide whether or not Young's is a possibility. So we have to go through.
If I could speak to that, I think it's well worth having the same thought process go through it. Have an engineer or an architect come down through there, walk through the property, give us a cost estimate on making that either work for us or not. So that way, we don't just walk away from a possibility of spot of land that will work without having to go through state permitting for wetland stuff. And if we come back that that project is cheaper in the end run and it'll work for us for the next thirty, forty, a hundred years, then I don't, I don't see why we're throwing that out the window without having actual input from people that are in the business.
I don't either. I would like, and I, I.
My only concern is I don't want, when we start talking to Young's property, Young's property, we don't own. If on our tax rules, I'm getting revenue from that right now. I'm hoping to keep the, the tax rate down with that. If we go and buy it, that comes off. It's gotta be made up someplace else. And I'm, I'm, wanna make sure it makes so much sense that I'm willing to take it off the tax.
It's nice, well, how much revenue do we lose out the building?
I don't know, but I thought that was the dumbest decision I've ever seen, quite frankly. There's no way that that should've came off the tax.
Well, I mean.
But that, but that said.
It's a private sale, you don't have any.
Yeah, if, if the Young's property, if something has, Aaron just said, if an engineer went or someone went in there and looked at it and found that you could buy that for a certain price and put a couple hundred thousand dollars into it to take care of it or whatever, you're still money ahead.
If you, if you show me the dollars that you can do it cheaper at Young's than you can do at the airport.
Listen, let's do that now.
I'd go get, if that's what you're.
It's gonna be cheaper than seven million.
Well, I, I wanna understand if that, if that property will last us as long as a new building. Because if we're gonna invest money, I'm not gonna go with the cheaper if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be, you know, needing to be addressed ten years down the road.
Well, that, I think that's the answer, that's the questions, one of the questions that should be asked. So to make, so we're not here all night. Let's leave it at this, let's leave it at, let's get somebody in there to look at that and give us a realistic. And realistic means not somebody who's gonna give your opinion of what you want. You know what that means? And so we look at that and we also look at the same, at the same time, we start the basics of, of what we need up there for a brand new car. And then come back and then we got something to discuss as tangible. That, that's a little less than what you're thinking you should have to do right now, I think. Or am I crazy?
I don't understand.
I mean, you're, you're worried about going through the whole process and then somebody saying, no, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, it's spinning wheels.
We could get, we can get basics here. I mean, three million dollars is a lot of money. But not, not now. Not, it's, it's a lot of money for people that never had three million dollars, you know? So, but it's not a lot of money to spend on buildings nowadays. However, if we can do it cheaper and get what we need and it'll last us time, I mean, that's a big deal. That's a big deal. And let's get, let's start with that kind of information. Basics, square footage, whatever. And at least we got something tangible to talk about. And then we can go to the, to the, to the next step, which would be choose Young's or choose New or something in the middle. I don't know what the middle would be, but I mean, there might. So, so we're not sprinting our wheels every time we come here and we, we argue about things that, that we don't even know what we're talking about yet.
That one down there probably, that'd be sooner than later because if somebody comes along with money and that was a feasible option, that would've gone.
Yeah, and, and you know, it, it would be nice to keep it on the tax rules. It's not a lot of money, but I'm sure it's a couple thousand dollars, five or six or eight thousand dollars a year, something like that.
That building's in a, in a nice location too because it's right on the rail and it's right by the highway. If somebody came in.
Potential jobs for people.
I mean, maybe, maybe the, maybe the solution down there would be to buy the property, mull everything down, put it in a building.
That's, that's been, I know the DPW was looking forward to that building, but that's been my argument this whole time. We already have, not to say the building is bad, because it is a nice building. But we have a building of that quality already. To, to buy a building of similar quality but bigger doesn't.
I'm gonna disagree.
Oh, no, you can see right, you can see.
There's a thought process here that I have, I'd like to just explain it briefly because I don't wanna spend a lot of time. But the building down on Prospect Street is fifty by a hundred and ten, okay? It's, yes, you can see some holes through it. But that could be spray foamed and put in a roof on it. You're gonna save the price of concrete, you're gonna save the initial price of the steel structured building. So that's gonna be quite a saving. So that's what we gotta get figured into this.
Yeah.
Okay. The set block going in front of it is no brick. That could be leveled and a shop and a wash bay could be put in there with a break room and a, and a decent bathroom for these guys when they're there. We still have the old building rehabbed to a point where they could use it for storage, cold storage, semi-heated storage. And they could have the decent building to maintain their vehicles and wash. Everything will be undercover. And I googled it, there's room for a salt iron to the west of it. Okay? I wish the property was a little bigger for some extra storage for gravel piles and miscellaneous. But probably.
You pile gravel over there.
Yeah, that's correct. And that would not be a big home for a loader to transport from wherever they are now to the Young's property for storage. So that's just another way to look at it. And I know I said before, make do, but I'm not gonna use that term. Because we're not really making do, we're trying to make do as to save money. If I'm me.
Yeah, I, I just want, I wanna see numbers, I wanna see.
I do too.
Gestimates. I know they're gestimates, I know.
They're gestimates, I've been getting some off the cuff numbers. I didn't know where we were at, but I'll get some concrete stuff.
Okay, so we have a direction. Sorry. We've had a direction.
Yeah, no, that's, let's hear them. No, Julie, I had Aaron already answered, but I was gonna ask about the signs in the middle row. Here, he's talking about that.
Okay. Nothing today? Covered it.
I got something from Jeff, or Jeff Sheldon got some, some mail. Anybody wanna donate to the housing trust, here's the form. And we talked about the dog park gate. Let me just take a look and see what's going on there. Okay? That's all I got? You got some financials?
I do. Uh, let's see, I'd like to make a motion to accept a payroll for thirty one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to accept the pay warrants for eight hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty eight and thirty nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
With the, with the, there's two hundred and fifty something thousand for the school, right?
There's the school payment in there and there's another.
And then there's a, there's a paving.
There's a paving.
Just so that people don't think that we spent that kind of money.
That's why everyone's has it in the second.
Yeah. Right, there were two large payments in there for about seven hundred thousand of that right there.
I just wanted to make sure people realize that five hundred thousand of it's school.
All those in favor?
Aye. And the checkbook sits at one million eight hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and forty seven dollars and sixty four cents.
Not, not after we paid the school. Or is that after?
That's after.
That's after, yeah.
Do okay. Great. Okay, we have an executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, labor relations and negotiations under one, DSA three thirteen A one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.